Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us today for the Meet the Candidates Council Candidate Forum. My name is Chris Haynes. I'm the interim president at Scottsdale Community College, home of the Fighting Artichokes, and I will serve as the moderator for this forum. First of all, I want to say congratulations to the candidates for making the November ballot. I also want to say thank you very much for stepping up to serve and to go through the campaign and all the work that you had to do to get here. So congratulations to all of you. I want to, first of all, to thank our partners who are helping sponsor this event: Scottsdale Area Chamber of Commerce, Scottsdale Coalition for Today and Tomorrow, Scottsdale Leadership, and Scottsdale Arts. Thank you all very much for making this possible today. Now, on today's program, is everybody ready?
Ready.
So each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. We will then ask each candidate questions that have been submitted in advance by the public and event hosts. Upon request and at the discretion of the moderator, that's me, a 30-second rebuttal may be allowed. Timing with this virtual forum is critical, so we ask the candidates to respect the timeframe for responses. We will provide a time warning, and if you exceed your response time, we will let you know. And finally, at the conclusion of the questions, we will offer a one-minute closing statement to each candidate. And now, let's meet the candidates. So you all will be able to give us a two-minute opening statement, and we're going to begin in alphabetical order for this. So first, Tammy Caputi, we're going to let you go ahead and start off with your opening statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Tammy Caputi. I'm always running. I run my own lighting business. I run my three kids to school. I run marathons, and now I'm running for city council to be a positive-thinking voice for Scottsdale. I want Scottsdale to be even better for my kids than it's been for me. My passion is the future of our city, our livability and our quality of place. This means economic vitality, a diverse economy, a development with public benefits, and collaboration with our schools so our children can get a top education and find good jobs from hire to retire. We need council members who will govern with facts, lens, and integrity, who will create consensus and promote collaboration, business skills and creativity to help rebuild our local economy. We have an opportunity to build back more progress, more prepared, and better for everyone. I want to build a positive, unified city where everyone has a voice and trusts the system. Residents are engaged, valued, and partnered with our council. Activism has its place, but council members must understand what it means to govern. We can't afford an us-versus-them mentality. Scottsdale has been moving in the right direction for years, and we need to maintain that positive momentum. I hope voters will see through the short-sighted ideas and divisive rhetoric that will be vocalized by some here today. Investing in our economic hubs creates sales tax revenue that keeps our quality of life high, property value strong, and property taxes low. A strong economy keeps Scottsdale successful for our residents. It's what allows us to have preserved lands and open spaces, high amenities and jobs. It's how we create and maintain a healthy, balanced community for ourselves and future generations. We can't afford to stand in the way of economic progress and success. I've spent the last 20 years bringing light and power all over Arizona, and now I want to help shine light on Scottsdale. I'd be honored for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you, Tammy. Now, Tom Durham.
Thank you. My main reason for running for city council is to give a voice to Scottsdale citizens who have been ignored by the current city council majority for too long. This failure to listen to the citizens was most evident in the fight over the Desert Discovery Center. The final vote on Proposition 420 showed that the citizens opposed this plan by an overwhelming majority of about 70% to 30%. And in this vote, Betty Janik and I stood up for the voices of the citizens. Yet there were three candidates on today's forum who ignored the citizens. When she was on the Development Review Board, Tammy Caputi actually voted to put the Desert Discovery Center in the Preserve, contrary to the opinion of 70% of the population. And John Little, Tammy, and Becca Linnig are all endorsed by Scottsdale Realtors, who pledged tens of thousands of dollars to build the Desert Discovery Center. Now, some people are trying to tell us that we need to put the Desert Discovery Center vote in the rearview mirror. They're doing that because they don't want you to remember who stood up for the citizens and who stood up for developers. These are the same people who went in support out-of-control development in Scottsdale. These development supporters are pouring huge sums of money into the candidacy of those running against me and Betty. I've made it clear that I won't accept any money from the developers who are seeking to fill Scottsdale with more height and density. When I vote in favor of a project, they'll know that it's good for Scottsdale. Now, some people have claimed that I'm anti-business. That's not true. I was a business lawyer for 35 years, and I understand the importance of economic growth. But new business must abide by the rules which give Scottsdale its special character. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Benny Janik.
You can leave, Betty.
While Betty's getting that figured out, I think she just left us for a second, and I'm sure she'll be back in. Becca Linnig, are you available to give a two-minute opening?
Hi, Chris. Thank you. As you may or may not know, I just got out of an airplane, and I'm on the road. My grandma passed this morning, so I just want to very quickly give a quick opening and then bid you adieu. It's important that you guys know that this is important to me, but family obviously comes first. So if you'll indulge me for just a moment, what's important to you is important to me. On the campaign trail, what I'm hearing you say is that you want someone that's invested in Scottsdale, all of Scottsdale. Some of the areas do feel like they're neglected, and someone that has the long-term perspective that have been there through good times and bad. We need a council member that has business and planning experience, a unique perspective, who's a good listener, but most importantly, someone that can make decisions that the residents can trust. As a Realtor, I've had the pleasure of introducing numerous visitors and residents to areas of Scottsdale that they want to call home. I get to hear what they like and what they don't like about our city. Just yesterday, I talked to a 12-year resident that didn't even know that we had several self-guided walking tours in our downtown area. For the past decade, I've been to our nation's capital on an annual basis, fighting for your private property rights. I've led the largest trade association in Scottsdale, and long before my name was on the ballot, I dedicated countless hours to the health of our city. I support our fire and our police departments, and we need to let them know that. I'm proud of the services that we offer in Scottsdale, and we need to concentrate on our economic recovery. Embrace the beautiful open spaces that we have and elect council members that are connected, experienced, have tenure in our city. And again, I apologize that I'm going to cut my appearance short, but I do ask if you reach out on www.beccaforScottsdale.com, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Becca, we all send you prayers and good wishes, and please know that we send our condolences from everyone at Scottsdale, so thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go next to John Little.
Good, thank you, and welcome, everybody, that's tuned in. My condolences, first of all, to Becca and the loss of your grandmother. I know that stress a lot can be. Even now that you're traveling, it's even more so, so thank you for being with us. Your voice is important. So coincidentally, earlier this week, a reporter reached out to me and perhaps other members of the other candidates to ask us a simple question, which was, "So how do you deal with stress?" I'm pretty sure she was thinking about the fact that serving on the council can be stressful. Let me share with you just a second, a personal story. I'll tell you what stress is. One is being diagnosed with cancer, which I was, which I have overcome, and I've conquered cancer. Another stressor for me was the loss of our son way before he should have passed. Those are stressors. Those are the things that stress me out. Serving my fellow citizens on the city council does not stress me out. Anything my opponents may say will not stress me out, not going to be unsettling to me. What does stress me out, however, is looking at our parents and our students and our teachers trying to assimilate themselves back into schools today. What stresses me out is looking at our employers trying to hang on by their fingernails to keep their staffs and their payrolls intact. Our police officers, who all over the country are being ambushed and assaulted at times. We have all kinds of people. All of us are worried about our health, our firefighters in California that go to help out with the wildfires there, and also our marginalized people in this community who don't feel like they're welcome here. That's who's stressed. I'm prepared to deal with my stress, and I've done it, and I'm ready to serve my fellow citizens in helping them deal with the things that are stressing them out in their lives, and that's why I'm running for Scottsdale City Council.
Thank you, John. Perfect timing. And last but not least, Guy Phillips.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, well, we still have Betty, too, and we can get back to her. And I want to say, you know, my condolences to Becca and her family, for my family. Those are stressors right there, so best wishes. So I'm Guy Phillips. I grew up in Phoenix and moved to Scottsdale about 25 years ago. I own an AC business and injured myself about a year ago now, and I'm kind of semi-retired. Met my wife here, Cora. Together, we raised five children all through the Scottsdale Public School System. And I've been on the city council for past two terms, almost eight years, and I'm running for my third and final term. And I hope all this time that my constituents have appreciated what I've done for them and to be able to help them and help small businesses in Scottsdale. I'm very passionate about it, and it's very rewarding when you're able to help somebody, especially when you're going to the bureaucratic red tape of City Hall. So that's what I enjoy doing. I'm a regular guy. I'm not an elitist. I don't try to pretend I'm better than anybody else. I got in the council because I wanted to help the city. I saw that we were losing tourism, we were losing our Western flavor, and I wanted to try to protect that. I think tourism is a lifeblood at Scottsdale, and we need to do everything we can to protect that. So that being said, I look forward to your questions, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Betty, I see you're back with us.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can. I thank you very much.
There was a computer glitch. I apologize. And again, my condolences to Becca and the loss for her, and I hope everything works out for her. So, okay, so first of all, I wanted to thank you, the people who supported the forum, and the moderator, Chris Haynes. My name's Betty Janik, and back in December 2019, I filed the paperwork to become a candidate for Scottsdale City Council. And the reason I did this was because of the work I'd been doing with the Coalition Greater Scottsdale. I saw from that work that over the past four years, all the zoning requests had been approved, and I don't think this is what the citizens really wanted to see in their community. I agreed that the only way to change it was to actually run for a seat on city council. Now, in the primary, I received the most votes, and I believe my message resonated with the voters, and I promised to represent the citizens first. I want to be your voice, a voice for you, but in order to be your voice, I need to listen to you. Residents come first. Thoughtful growth is a backbone of the new general plan, which is currently under consideration. Thoughtful growth, it should keep the unique character of our city. It should maintain our open spaces and view quarters. It should follow the zoning guidelines as outlined in the general plan the citizens will be asked to ratify, and it is the expression of our vision for our city. I recognize that tourism is a major economic engine of Scottsdale. It keeps us clean, safe, and innovative. We need to celebrate the diversity of our city and respect and maintain it. It is why the visitors come to Scottsdale. The vision will become a reality. We need to unify our citizens. Our partnerships with residents, businesses, and city council, this is possible. At the city council meeting last night, we saw it in action. All parties need to be included and respected. Tom and I took an honesty pledge. We would take no contributions from developers and their associates with business before the city. This is the only way to maintain the objectivity of city council. I challenge others to take the same pledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty, and I'm glad you're back.
Yes, thank you.
You knew that was going to happen one way or another.
Oh, yeah. True, true.
Oh, everyone, here's what we're going to start our question-and-answer session. So I've got a couple of questions here. I'm going to start with Tammy first, because you were our first guinea pig when you did the two minutes.
It gets me every time.
So here's the first question, and all of you will be able to answer this question. The question is, the city has identified three economic growth areas: the airpark, McDowell Road corridor, and downtown. Do you agree with the strategy, or would you change it? What is the most effective way to plan for growth in the city of Scottsdale? And Tammy, I'll start with you, and you have two minutes.
I tend to agree with that concept of having economic growth areas. I think that it's really important for us as a city to balance our open spaces and our neighborhoods with areas that are going to be economic drivers for our city. Forty-seven percent of our city budget comes from sales tax revenue, and we have to make sure that we don't antagonize the business community, but that we encourage development in our city in areas that make sense. The areas that you just listed, the airpark, our downtown area, the McDowell Road corridor, those are perfect examples of areas that we do need to concentrate economic activity in. Again, we can't just have a city where we alienate all the people that want to invest in our future. We've got to be encouraging to these people so that we have the beautiful things that we are talking about. Twenty-five percent of our community is reserved to be the Preserve. We have beautiful open spaces. We have a city that's diverse, and we need to make sure that we don't just push all that away, that we give attention to the areas that require development. We've had great luck in those areas. The Scottsdale Airpark generates, I believe, almost $700 million in revenue for our city every year. The downtown is a major economic driver. Of course, we want to develop smart. Nobody wants stupid development, but we have to make sure that we develop in the areas that make sense in order to preserve our quality of life. That's the only way that our formula works. Scottsdale is a great place to live because we have high amenities, strong property values, and low property taxes, and the only way that works is to make sure that we encourage the areas that are economic drivers for our city and the places where it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Tom Durham, same question to you.
I agree that those three areas are probably, or should be, our main focus for economic development and growth. And as Betty had said earlier, we need to work on a new general plan that will focus on those areas and possibly other areas for economic growth. It's important to remember that right now, we are the number-one city in the United States for job growth, so we're on the right track, and we're doing well, and we need to keep doing what we're doing. But, you know, my concern over development is that if developers want to come to Scottsdale, they've got to live by the rules. We have very specific rules, zoning rules, that are intended to keep our special character of life, and we have too many developers coming in who automatically ask for variances on height and density, and we've seen those variances granted over and over and over again over the last four years. So we've got to stop that. We've got to say to people who want to come to Scottsdale, "This is a great place. It's the greatest place in the United States to live, and it won't be a good place to work unless we make sure that it's a great place to live." So we need to keep our rules. We need to make sure that people who come here follow our rules, and if they do, will continue to be a great place for both jobs and for people to live.
Tom, can I ask you a follow-up question? So when you say "follow the rules," give me an example of that for anybody that isn't sure what you mean by that.
Well, there are literally dozens of them over the last four years. The Marquee Building, which was scheduled to start construction downtown, did not have the proper stepbacks or setbacks that our rules require. It took advantage of new rules allowing 150 feet, but it did not provide the public benefits that are required by the ordinance. And even the city staff agreed that the Marquee did not follow the urban design and architectural guidelines, yet it was still passed.
Thank you, Tom, for the clarification. That's helpful. So let's go now to Betty. Same question, Betty.
I think it's wonderful that we have identified the three areas for growth, and I agree that these are three very desirable areas for economic growth. The problem is with the details. What is the type of economic growth we want? We look at the Scottsdale Airpark. We have Exxon. We just approved the Exxon plan where we will contribute $9 million to their infrastructure. My question is, why are we giving a very, very successful Scottsdale company $9 million? I don't know that that question was asked, so finally, some of the people on city council were delving into it, and we finally saw the detail. Why didn't we see the detail when it was first proposed? Okay? We now have Nationwide. Is Nationwide a good company? Of course it's a good company. We've given them $20 million with a 24-year payback. Is that good business for Scottsdale? If the money is short, what's going to happen? Me and the taxpayers are going to have to make up the difference. So we need to make sure that we bring the taxpayers, the citizens, along. Also, with Old Town, what is our vision of Old Town? Some people see high rises all around. I think now that we see what's there and what's planned, it's like, oh, whoops, we went too far. South Bridge 2 is a perfect example. South Bridge 2 was approved. What happened? The citizens had to have a referendum to say, "Wait a second, it's too much. It's not what we want." So I suggest that, again, these are great corridors for development, but we need to include the citizens from the very beginning when we make these plans, and in the past four years, that has not happened, and that is not good for the city. We want to unify everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next, let's hear from John Little.
It's really hard going after four other people because there's just issues upon issues get piled on here, but let me start out with your essential question, which is the three growth areas. I wouldn't quibble with those. You know, in 2011, Applied Economics did a study that looked at the net impact of growth in three different areas. Area one was McKellup's Road to Indian Bend. Area two is Indian Bend to Deer Valley, and area three was Deer Valley North. And what they found out was the net annual impact of growth and development in the southern part of our community was about $6.8 million annually. In the middle part of our community was about $11.2 million annually. And you know what? North of Deer Valley, it cost the city $1.9 million annually to provide services up there. So in essence, we've got parts of the city that both Betty and Tom and Guy there are really worried about us doing development in, but those are the areas that are paying for the quality of life that the people in the north enjoy. So let's see if we can find a little balance in our community where growth does pay for itself. And Betty, sorry to disagree with you, but you know what? The development agreement was there for you to look at. $12 million investment on the city's part, $16 million return on our investment for Exxon. So there wasn't anything magic about that. It was there for everybody to see. It was very clear. So let's do our homework. Let's make sure that we don't immediately come out of the blocks and oppose things. And as a city council member, you're not supposed to do that. As a city council member, you examine all the facts before you come out with an opinion. You guys came out with an opinion before you even examined the facts, and I don't think that's the kind of behavior that city council members should engage in.
Thank you, John. Last but not least, Guy Phillips. Can I have you answer that question, please?
Sure. I don't know if I'm last, but okay. So, you know, we have the three growth areas, and, you know, I have a unique perspective of being on the council for eight years and actually voting on these projects and fighting these projects, you know? And I fought the South Bridge 2 project in Old Town because I wanted to destroy Fifth Avenue. So that's a great example of a project that is more detrimental to the community than actually helps the community. If you're looking for a good growth area, I believe it's north of the airpark around the 101. And we have Exxon there and Nationwide. There was a lot of criticism to that. I voted for those. But the point being is, it's the public benefit far outweighs the aesthetic look of what they wanted. Sure, for 30 seconds on the 101 freeway heading east, you won't see a portion of the McDowell, but, you know, let's face it, it backs up to a freeway, it backs up to a water treatment plant, and it's on state trust land, and that money went through education. And when you weigh it out over the next 10 years, it'll be over $8 billion economic impact at Scottsdale. Very hard to say no to that. So when you look at these kind of projects, yeah, would I want Nationwide up on Pima and Diamond Mine? Of course not. And I voted against the gas station that they wanted to build up there. But projects go where projects should go, in my opinion, and that's why I tried to prove it. I wouldn't want Nationwide in Old Town either. So it's really a case-by-case basis, but I think that's the best area. It's all state trust land. It's there to be developed, and we just have to make sure that it's responsible development, and then in the end, that the people get a benefit out of it. Somebody mentioned the Marquee project. You're right, we're not getting a benefit out of that, and I didn't vote for that one either. But that's the main thing. Make sure that the project benefits the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. So I just want to remind everybody that Becca Linnig is not with us during this forum. She had a family emergency, so she won't be part of the forum. She did give her two-minute opening statement and then had to leave. So just a reminder of that for those of you that may have come in a little bit late.
May I respond to what John Little said concerning me in his statement?
Yes, Betty, you have about 30 seconds. Go right ahead.
Okay, thanks. Well, what I want to say to John Little is, he claims all the information was there on Exxon. He claims that the $9 million, we had line item expenses. If that's the case, why did city council have to run around and get staff to produce that data? That data was not readily available. It is usually not readily available. It is difficult for citizens to find it. I listen to the citizens. I talk to them. We need to ask the questions. We need to get clear answers. That is not what is happening. Why did Solange Whitehead have to run around with staff members and say, "What's this cost? What's that cost?" I don't understand. So don't tell me that that information is readily available. It is not.
Tom, if you're trying to speak, you're on mute. Tom, if you're out, if you're trying to speak, you're, you're on mute.
Can I add a brief comment to what John said?
Sure.
I did not oppose Exxon. In fact, in my article, I'm quoting from my article, I said Exxon is exactly the type of company we want in Scottsdale. And it is. But in two weeks is not enough time to ask all the questions that need to be asked. And the city's economic analysis pretended that all the jobs connected this to Exxon would leave Scottsdale if we didn't vote in favor of it. But if, if Exxon were relocated to the, uh, the reservation, most of those jobs would have stayed here.
Thank you, Tom. All right, everyone, we're going to move to the next question. And, uh, this time we're going to start with Guy Phillips. And here's the question. Traffic and housing issues. 150,000 workers come into the city every day for their jobs. Do you think it's better or worse if more of them lived in Scottsdale, reducing the traffic congestion into and out of the city? Better or worse? I should.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And we've had roundtable discussions on that. You know, it's funny, uh, when you talk about rush hour, you know, in the morning you see all this trapping on the freeway, people going to work, and in the evening they're all coming back home. Why is that? That's because people don't want to live near where they work. If we could say everybody lived near where they work, we wouldn't have a rush hour. There wouldn't be any trapping. You know, I remember growing up too, and, uh, I never wanted to live next to my work. Most of the time, especially on, uh, restaurant jobs and types like that, if you live near to work, guess who they're going to call when somebody doesn't show up? So that's why people don't want to be that person. It's just a reality of life. And so I don't see the, a, a problem with people commuting to work. I think that's just part of life. That's what people do. Uh, if you want to say we need, you know, affordable housing so that everybody can live here, well, how can we have affordable housing when our property value is so high? And the builder can't build something affordable? You know, that's just another economic reality at Scottsdale. So, you know, in my opinion, uh, it is what it is. What we need to do is be able to, I think we need to work with the traffic department, to be honest with you. We need to, uh, find a better, uh, timing system for the lighting than what we have because you can go through one light and hit the red light on the next one when it should flow better. But, you know, that's, that's a problem with staff that we've, we've been working on for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. And if you could figure out how to get those red lights to be green all the time, that would be really helpful for me too. So I'll, I'll work with you on that. Um, so next, John Little, can I have you answer that question as well?
Yeah, I think ideally, um, we want more people to live and work in Scottsdale. In fact, right now, I think 33,000 people a day live and work and don't have very long commutes. They both live in the community and they have jobs here. So 33,000 a day get to just have a short drive to work. I think with, uh, what the city council has done in terms of establishing the Cure Corridor, uh, looking at the three economic growth areas that we talked about for job creation, these things that are things that can help prevent urban sprawl. We do not need to continue to expand out creating long commutes for people. The Scottsdale Area Association of Realtors has endorsed me because they know I understand that the Salt River Committee, for example, will create 80,000 jobs in the Loop 101 corridor over the next 20 years. 80,000 jobs. That's good news for the housing market in Scottsdale because, as Guy mentioned, people don't want long commutes. They're going to want to live where they work. So I think the focus, uh, to resolve some of the transportation issues is job creation. Let's create more jobs here. Let's bring businesses to Scottsdale, uh, so that people can also live here and work here, uh, because that's what people are going to want to do. Um, also, I think work from home is going to have a huge impact on, uh, eliminating some of the, uh, congestion that people see. And something I'll talk about a little bit later on, perhaps, if it comes up again on transportation. Um, I think the Transportation Master Plan is, uh, is a really good plan and has some really cool elements. So we'll maybe address those a little bit later.
Thank you, John. Uh, Betty, can you address, address that question as well?
Um, yes, concerning traffic. Well, first of all, I was born and raised in Chicago. And while we think we have a huge traffic problem here, it is nowhere near what most of the big cities have. And I think that is one of the huge draws that Scottsdale has, that although it's not as good as it used to be, the traffic is pretty good. One of the big concerns from the people that I've spoken with is traffic in their community from, caused from the development of high rises in condos and high-density developments. And I think we need to be very careful that we do not overbuild in that segment because that will definitely have a negative impact on our traffic. Um, I also think that we should consider workforce housing. Now, I know Tammy wants high amenities and low taxes and high property values, but there has to be a happy medium. If you have high property values, you can't have workforce housing. You can't afford to have it. So I think we need to look at the city as a whole. I think we need to study what other cities have done with this type of a situation. And I do think we need to be mindful that it would be advantageous to have housing available for the people that really are the core of our workforce, the firemen, the policemen, the nurses, et cetera, that go to work every day and try to accommodate their demands for what they expect as far as commutes go. But again, it is a problem where there's a happy medium. And I think that to find that happy medium, you need to make sure that you include the citizens in finding the appropriate solutions.
Thank you, Betty. Uh, next, Tom, you answered that question as well.
Sure. Now, Scottsdale is one of the most popular places in the United States to move to. Some of the recent surveys in the wake of COVID have shown that more people are moving here than any other location in the United States. And, and that's good for us. Um, but it does increase property values. Uh, it makes it harder to live here for lower-income people. And so one of the things that I would really like to do is if I'm elected to the council, is explore innovative ways of, um, creating more affordable housing. One of the things that I was really good at as a lawyer was working with expert witnesses and looking out people for people who are smarter than I am. And, um, that's one of the things that I did is find expert witnesses, uh, who were experts in different areas. And I'd like to work with people, uh, from around the country who would be leaders in figuring out, uh, how we can afford to house teachers, policemen, firemen, nurses, medical workers, and other people that we want to live in Scottsdale but have a harder time living up, uh, with our prices. And on the south side, um, Betty and I have talked to many people on the south side who, who feel that they're a dumping ground for the more dense, uh, and taller buildings and that are causing traffic in that area. And we, we need to do something, uh, with that area and respond to the feelings of people in that area who feel that they're being used, um, as the place to put all of the new people that are coming to Scottsdale, uh, because they're not happy about it. And we need to spread them across the city, Betty. That's it.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. And, uh, Tammy, let's hear from you.
First of all, Betty, I do want to point out that you can actually have an affordable home that maintains its value. And that's the whole point. We need to have a city that, thank you for repeating my message, high amenities, strong property values for everyone's home, and low property taxes. I think the question was about how we feel about traffic and housing, and it's a great question. As you pointed out, there are 150,000 people that come in and out of our city every day to work. That puts a huge amount of stress on our infrastructure. It causes a great deal of pollution, traffic, issues of parking, all the things nobody wants for their community. What better solution than to have a hu- housing available to the citizens of our city so that we can live and work and play all in the same place? A slightly higher density of housing in areas where it makes sense decreases traffic, decreases pollution, improves our infrastructure, and cures a lot of these problems of people having to come in and out. I personally think it makes for a better, more diverse, stronger community when the people who teach our children, take care of ours, of us, protect us, our, our police, our fire, our teachers, have a home in our community. It makes for a much richer, more diverse community. It's better for everyone. And as I pointed out, you've got less traffic, less pollution, more open space. It sort of solves every problem that we're worrying about. And again, to reiterate, 150,000 people come in and out of our city every day. We are home to 18,000 businesses here and 180,000 workers in Scottsdale. I just want to remind everybody that Scottsdale is a vibrant, wonderful place to live in. We are not a bedroom community. Our, our formula works. Most people are happy here, and I've never heard so much doom and gloom in my life. Things are good. Let's make sure we move forward towards the future in a positive way that works for everyone and includes everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. So everyone, this is question three, and this was, uh, brought to us by one of the citizens, and it's a little bit longer, so I can read it again if you like. So here we go. Right now, our country is so politically divided that it's tearing our country and communities apart. This political divide is not just a national issue, but also a local issue. Our community is suffering, and we have felt the effects from this, this divide. The city of Scottsdale has lost its path from which we were founded, based on nonpartisan beliefs. How will you engage the community to set their differences aside so that we can all work together for the greater good and future sustainability of Scottsdale? So what I'm going to start with this time, we're going to begin with John Little. And John, do you need me to read that question again, or is everybody good?
I'm good. Thank you.
I'll let you start. Thank you.
So I, I believe that our city charter is sacrosanct. It was adopted by citizens, it was drafted by citizens. And they said, they were pre-essent in the 1961, when they put it to the voters and said, this is your city charter. You want to have partisan elections or nonpartisan elections? And they knew, perhaps back then, that partisan elections in the local level don't add value. Uh, Herb Drinkwater used to say, bottles aren't Democrats or Republicans, they just need fixing. And I couldn't agree more. Picking up your garbage is not a partisan issue. Clean water is not a partisan issue. Good schools aren't partisan issues. Uh, actually, mask mandates aren't partisan issues, they're health issues. Politics has infested the public discourse, and it's become a shorthand for excluding people and ideas. We go to our respective corners and we think that we can throw haymakers at the other people, partisan haymakers that, that continue to divide us. I don't think that there's anybody, and, and, you know, tip of the hat to all the people on the screen here that I can see. I think that our common, shared interest is a beautiful community to live in that's safe, that's secure, that's clean, that's sanitary, that's healthy. Those things don't need to be partisan. We have shared values, we have shared goals, but we're going to disagree on the tactics. Tactics don't need to be partisan either. I think that it's a disrespect to the voters. It's a disrespect to our community founders who said nonpartisan elections to bring partisanship into this election. I think, I think it's the beginning of the end of nonpartisan elections if we allow that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, next up, Betty.
Hey, I, um, I'm extremely disappointed at how partisan this election has become. And I hope that in the future, we can reduce that. But I have to tell you, when I get emails, what's the first question? What party are you from? That will determine how you vote on city issues. But you know what? That's just not true. The city issues are those that impact us the most. And yet, and we all want the community that has good schools. We all want safe communities. We all want short commutes to work. And I think that part of the dissatisfaction right now is because we need to bring everybody together, and the citizens feel that their voices have not been heard. Now, I know John thinks that everybody is very happy with what's going on in the city and with the development. The problem is, I don't think he's in touch with a lot of the citizens. I have delivered over 6,000 door hangers in the southern part of the city. My friend Gail, for three years, all she's heard is beep, beep, beep from the construction trucks. Without, without exception, every person I spoke with said, all this construction has gone too far. So I think that we need to try to dial down some of this rhetoric. But I also think the problem is we need to value every opinion and listen to every person when they voice that opinion. And I hope that in the future, the elections become less partisan and more about what's involved with the city. Um, I also think because historically the city has been more Republican, people have kind of gravitated to that aspect or moved from being a Democrat to independent to try to capture that, uh, aspect of the city. And I don't think that's good. I think that's a bad indicator of the true intentions. So that's kind of my comments on it.
Thank you very much, Betty. Uh, Tom Durham.
Um, I just want to open up, but to first respond to something that Tammy had said, that, um, we're doom and bloomers. And, and, you know, that's not true at all. I, I think this is the best place in the United States to live. Uh, when I retired, I had my choice about anywhere in the country, and I chose Scottsdale. And, and I don't see it as doom and gloom at all. I see it as a great place to live, and that's the reason I'm running, is I want to help keep it that way. Now, on the issue of nonpartisan elections, I, I agree with most of what John said. Uh, the issues that base Scottsdale are, are not partisan. He's, he's right about potholes. They, they don't need a Democrat or a Republican to fill them. And so I, I think it's, it's great that we, we try to have nonpartisan elections. We all want the same thing for Scottsdale. Uh, we want it to be beautiful and clean and great parks and, uh, great jobs and, and all the things we have going for us. But like, like Betty, I've gotten a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails that say, who are you going to vote for, for president? And, uh, you know, when I refuse to answer, uh, you know, they, they don't like it. Um, Betty and I are the only two candidates who have been endorsed by bipartisan members on the current city council. Uh, we've been endorsed by both Kathy Littlefield, who's a Republican, and Solange Whitehead, who's a Democrat. And we've worked with both of them on 420 and other issues. And I think those endorsements are a great testament to our bipartisan abilities. Um, they've seen what we can do, and they know we'll work in a bipartisan way for the people of Scottsdale.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Tammy.
Thank you. I first want to point out that the idea of putting people into an us versus them doesn't just apply to Democrats and Republicans. A few of my challengers continue to, Betty keeps talking about height and density and development. Pitting people who want to move the city forward in a, in a wise way versus people who don't want to construct anything is equally divisive as partisan politics. They continue to do this, it's us versus them, over and over and over again. And that's even more divisive, in my opinion, in making this election partisan. Having said that, I as well get that call all day long. What party are you? That's going to determine how you vote. I think that, you know, I, I purposely am not being supported by either party. And I know John probably agrees with me on this because, as he said, city, city issues are nonpartisan. We should all be together on our values. And I believe we all share the same values: freedom, opportunity, security, equality, safety, protection. I've been endorsed by the Scottsdale Fire and Police, as has John, because we espouse those values. They're very important to us, and we believe that those represent the values of our city. How do we bring people together? I'm the chair of a board called the Scottsdale Coalition of Today and Tomorrow. We spend almost every single week gathering together groups from every part of this community to sit together at a table, a roundtable on Zoom, and talk about issues that matter to the city from every possible area of the city. It's important to get everyone's voices. Tom and Betty like to keep saying that. Tom and Betty like to keep saying that, that I don't have, you know, wide and deep community support, which is ridiculous. I have over 300 donors to my campaign from every possible occupation, from every possible demographic and geographic area. I have more resident donors than Tom and Betty put together. And it's just, I have the voice of everyone in this community. I speak with, I ran out of time, but I represent everyone in this community, residents and businesspeople. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. And Guy Phillips, can I have you answer that question, please?
Well, yeah, we're having fun now, aren't we? So, but let's look at this partisan, nonpartisan thing. The first time I ran, and even the second time I ran in 2016, I was very nonpartisan. I, I believed in the nonpartisan vote. I believe we need to, everybody needs to live and work together. But unfortunately, we need to be honest and realistic at what's happening today, and what's happening all across the country. And people are scared, and people are worried. And so what happens is, it's, it's no longer about the person, it's about the policy. And you want to know what that person's policy is going to be, and you can generalize the policy by who they are. So let's, let's take a nonpartisan election. Who does that help? Well, if you're a Republican, you say you're Republican. If you're a Democrat, you are afraid to say you're a Democrat, because you knew people wouldn't vote for you. But in the nonpartisan, nobody knows. And people have told me, even at the previous election in August, that when they got the Republican ballot, and they went to city council, and they saw nine names, they thought they were picking nine different Republicans, picking six out of those nine. It's like, because you don't know. But people want to know, because they're afraid of the policies that, that different political parties take. So city issues are very much partisan. Unfortunately, nowadays, if you get the wrong people in, you can get, you know, people who, who wanted to fund the police, people who want such a social justice program, things like that, and people want to know that. They want to know which direction the city is going to go. Yeah, a pothole is filled by anybody, but defunding the police isn't. And these are policies. Now, when you've got somebody that's a Democrat, and then they change to independent, what are they doing that for? Are they trying to hide the fact that they're Democrat because people won't vote for them? Or are they trying to go into the independent so that people, they'll get the Republican vote? I mean, it's, you know, just say who you are. You know, if you're afraid to say who you are, then there's something wrong with that. You know, I'm a proud Republican, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
Say, Chris, Betty did direct a part of her comments to me, so could I have 15 seconds?
You bet.
All right, so Betty, when I used to manage the airport at Scottsdale, it was right at 911. And I remember, we still had neighbors complaining about the sound of jets coming over after 911. And you remember, too, that we described that as the sound of freedom. Well, guess what beep, beep, beep is? Beep, beep, beep is the sound of economic sustainability. All our homes had beep, 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 didn't they? And now, as soon as we're in, we don't want to hear beep, beep, beep anymore. But guess what? Without beep, 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 we don't have cash registers ringing.
I'd like to respond to his comments. Okay. First of all, the people are the ones that should have the primary say in what goes on in their city. And they are not happy with all the beep, beep, beep. And that is really not the sound of freedom. The sound of freedom is bringing all the stakeholders to the table, to the citizens who live in the southern part of Scottsdale, that want to say in what goes on in their neighborhood. And just as an example, the citizens spent $500,000 to pull back on South Bridge Two and the Preserve, because city council proceeded against their wishes. And Tammy was one of the key people that supported putting commercial development in the Preserve.
Thank you, Betty. I'll have you, sorry, I have to pull the time on that.
That's fine.
Thank you, though. All right, everyone, we've got two more questions left, and I'd like to make sure we get these in before we have you, about two more questions, before we have you give your last ending statements. So here's the next question, and this is going back, back to economics again. How would you make a downtown, a year, our downtown, a year-round destination that generates the sales tax and other revenue needed to sustain the city's amenities and low property tax rate? If you need me to read that again when I get to you, I have no problem with that. So Betty, I'm going to come right back to you next on the list, and when you're ready.
I am ready. We want to encourage residents to come to our city year-round. And with COVID, I think we did a very good job of bringing people in, because we were voted one of the best cities to recover from COVID or to socially isolate. So that was really good. But I think what we need to remember is that in our Old Town Scottsdale, we need to keep what we have, we need to respect the past. Does it need updating? Does it need paint? Does it need some revision? Sure. Does it need major revision so it now becomes a new LA, a new Chicago, and New York? No, that will hurt the tourism industry. The people I speak to, who come to Scottsdale to visit, they love everything we have to offer here. They love our restaurants, they love the quaintness of downtown Scottsdale, they like the westmost western town, and we need to preserve that. And by preserving that, we can encourage tourists to come back, to see us, to celebrate our uniqueness, to enjoy what we have to offer, that most of the other cities have given up on in pursuit of bigger, better, taller, more, more, more. I don't think that's what Scottsdale is about. Again, I think Scottsdale is about respect for the past, look forward to the future, make it thoughtful growth, involve all the stakeholders. And I think that will contribute to the economic future of our downtown.
Thank you, Betty. Next up will be Tom Durham.
Thank you. Tammy said earlier, height and density are partisan issues, and I know, I don't think so at all. It's not partisan, it's a question of what people want. And if the people of Scottsdale want more height and density, they can vote for Tammy and John. And I'd be very happy with that. I'd go back into retirement and, and ride my bicycle. But if, if you don't want height and density, you have a choice here, and that's me and Betty. So it's not a partisan issue, it's a question of what people want. And as far as the breadth of our support, it's true, Betty and I don't get as many developer donors. We've told them, "Don't come knocking on our door to try to give us money, because we're not going to take it." We want to be free of influence from developers and other people who come to vote for the council. Now, as far as downtown goes, it's been ignored recently, because people have been waiting to put up 15-story buildings. And we need to tell them, "It's not going to happen. You're not going to get a 15-story building down there in Old Town. You've got to renovate what you have there, and a lot of it does need to be renovated." And we have no problem with three, four-story live, play, work designs. I think that would be fabulous in Old Town. But it's, it's not going to be 15 stories. And don't, don't wait for that to come, because it's not going to happen if Betty and I get elected. So please do what you can to renovate Old Town, fix up what's there, improve it with lower-rise apartments, restaurants, retail. That's what we need, and that's what I'd love to see down there. But don't wait for the 15-story apartments, because they're not going to come.
Thank you, Tom. Tammy, you're next.
Tom, I didn't mean to infer that height and density was a partisan issue. I'm saying that you and Betty continue to divide the citizens into this, we want to go forward versus we don't want to go forward. It's just, you're, you're continually doing this us and them thing, when we really need to all get together and move forward for the good of our city. You keep doing this. Vote for Betty and I if you want this, and, and you're dividing people, not by partisanship, but just by your vision of the city. So I 100% agree that downtown needs to be a year-round venue for the people who live here. Of course, tourism is hugely important for our city, but we need to make sure that our downtown is a thriving, exciting place year-round for tourists and people who live here. We absolutely should designate the Old Town area as historic, take it off and out of the conversation, never touch it. We all love historic Old Town. Just put it in a historic register, remove it, and let's talk about downtown. Downtown, again, needs to be thriving and exciting, and a place where everyone is going to go. To reiterate my earlier point, most of our sales tax dollars go towards our city budget, and we need to make sure that the places in our city that contribute to our revenues are being utilized successfully. Sometimes more height and density makes sense, sometimes it doesn't. We have very specific character area plans. One thing about my opponents here is that they're, they're saying a lot of things that actually aren't factual. They don't understand how the city works. I've sat on the Development Review Board for three years, and I'm here to tell you that we have very careful standards and guidelines that have been approved by the citizens. Everyone gets a chance to weigh in. Nobody pushes any voices away. The processes are good, they can always be made better, but we take everybody's voices. In addition, it's quite the irony to be told that you're not taking developer money, because Betty and Tom, the vast majority of your contributions came from one downtown owner developer. So it's an unbelievable hypocrisy that you keep saying this. And by the way, the people who invest in our city don't want to invest in your vision for the future. So it's no big deal for you to say you're not going to take the money. They're not giving it to you, they don't like your vision. Thank you.
Can we respond, Chris?
Tom, yes, please, go ahead.
I have not taken a dime of developer money. The person that you referred to is not a developer. He has never developed a thing, he's a landowner, he's a landlord. But he's not coming before the council, he's not asking for 15-story buildings. He's a person who's interested in preserving the character of Old Town Scottsdale. And he's, he's not looking for 15-story buildings or variances. He's just a person that's interested in maintaining what we've got down there.
Thank you. I'm going to go right over now to Guy, and have you answer that question as well.
No, that's a great question. And as soon as you read it, it just made me go back to, let's say, the good old days before 2020. But that's the one thing I always enjoyed about being on the city council, is working with Old Town. I love the area, I love the people. For eight years, I've tried to, let's say, preserve the area as much as, as possible. I don't think a historic register is really the solution, because once you do that, then it really restricts what you can do there. And a lot of those property owners want to be able to have that flexibility of what to do with their property. You know, I, I got the Parata Museum down there, I don't know if you've seen it, it's second and brown. And it's funny, it took me almost two years to get that. Guess who I had to fight? I had to fight City Hall of all places. Ah, I'm the city councilman, and the city gave me a hard time, like they didn't want a Parata museum. It was insane to me. So it was a hard, hard fought fight, but, but we got it there, and it's a really cool place, you got to check it out. You know, Giants is a big part of it. The Giants bring all the money to those merchants. They love the Giants, they love the Charles. Charles have been great for downtown. And so anything we can do to preserve our Old Town, I really try to stop any apartments, condos, businesses from getting to Old Town proper, because we need to preserve that area, a special area. If you go to other places, let's say, like Nashville or Austin, they have those areas, and they leave those alone, and they leave them alone on purpose, because they know that's the tourist draw. And that's what we need to do, too. That's what I've been doing, and that's what I'll continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. And John, can I have you answer the last, that last question?
Sure, thank you. You know, I think the purveyors of fear are confused people about what is Old Town. Let's talk, and Guy just mentioned the museum over in Old Town, and Cavaliers Blacksmith, and the Rusty Spur Saloon, Jay Choo's, all these great places we know, that is Old Town. Were up to me, I'd put a virtual fence around it, and say, "Let's not develop it, let's leave it and protect it and preserve it." We don't change things until we first decide what we want to preserve. So let's all agree, and we all agree that we want to preserve that part of Old Town. The second thing I want to talk about is that, you know, building height and density in, in all the years, I was the executive director of downtown for six years. I was down here seven days a week. My campaign office, right now, right out my window, is downtown. I know every square inch of downtown, and I can tell you that the issue is not building height and density for the people down here. The issue is quality, and it always was. And I'll tell you, Tony Nelson, who was one of the fathers, we've named buildings after Tony Nelson out at Westworld, he was against the waterfront project initially, but he came around when he realized that tall buildings can have more quality than some short buildings, one-story buildings, that are really ugly. Scottsdale has always been about aesthetics, and beauty, and great architectural design, and elevated design, and beautiful landscaping. That's what people want. We have some great-looking tall buildings, we have some really ugly, small buildings. So let's focus on what Scottsdale's about, our brand, quality.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, can I say something as well?
Who just, Tammy, did you just ask me that first?
Yeah.
Let me have you go first, then Betty, I'll give you-
I have a two-second comment. There aren't 15-story buildings in Old Town, downtown Scottsdale. There is very specific type III zoning in a few square blocks of our downtown area that allow for 150 feet. That doesn't require changing zoning or rules or regulations, it just is what it is. And when people build to those specifications, we've given them that, that format, and they're simply following our rules and regulations, which is a good thing. I want to ask a quick question to some of my challengers, particularly Tom and Betty, and we can get back to this later. But I'm just curious, because you keep saying that you're not anti-growth, you're not anti-development. Under what conditions would you approve a mid-sized building in Scottsdale? I just, I'd like to know where you picture a mid-sized building being approved in Scottsdale.
What do you mean by a mid-sized building?
Yeah.
I don't know, four, four stories, five stories, mid-sized.
Okay, let me do this, because I know we have, still have another question left. So Betty, if you, I knew, I know you wanted to give a rebuttal real quick, so I'll let you go ahead and do that, and then we'll do the question. And if we have time, we can come back to Tammy's question.
Okay, so this rebuttal is to John. John, we all want quality construction. I agree with that. But we all need to be aware that we need to make sure it fits into the neighborhood. Is it part of the general plan? The developers have cast aside the general plan that has worked for a decade, because they say it's old. Guess what? We came up with a new one, and the citizens didn't like it. So here we are, 10 years late, we don't have a general plan, and that's the excuse to put in all this density. We need to make sure that we do what the citizens want. And by the way, with protect our preserve, 70% of the citizens supported that we should not have commercial development in the Preserve. I believe that Tammy was way off-base when she said, "You can't study the desert without being in the desert." And that is a statement she made when she voted for the desert to-
Thank you, Betty.
You need to be in the desert to study it.
Okay, everybody. We've got our last question, and then we're going to have, we need time for you to have your, your final comments for the, for the end of the forum. So here's the last question, and this is going to start with, I'm going to be starting with Tom on this one. So that's a two-minute warning there, Tom.
Okay.
Okay. So here's the question. This week, the mayor rescinded his emergency declaration requiring face masks in public places. Do you agree with that decision? One, would you support efforts to agendize a future council discussion about extending the mask mandate in Scottsdale? Well, Tom, we're going to start with you.
Well, I didn't understand the mayor's logic, because as I understood it, the mayor said, "We're winning, so let's, let's drop the mandate." In my view, if you, if you're winning a football game in the third quarter, you don't say, "Okay, we're good, let's go to the locker room, it's over." You know, if you're winning, that's the time to keep pushing. And so, in my view, if we're winning, which, which I think we are, we're- And so, in my view, if we're winning, which I think we are, we're reducing the levels in Arizona, that's the time to double down and keep pushing. I think I'm probably opposed to an ordinance because an ordinance is more permanent. I think the mayor's emergency mandate was the right thing to do in the first place, and I would have continued it until we get this thing beat. I know masks are annoying. I don't like wearing one. But if I'm going to AJ's or Walgreens or wherever, I'll wear one. And I'm a very firm believer in the Constitution, but, you know, the people who say masks are unconstitutional don't know what they're talking about. So that's it. I would have continued the mandate. I'm probably opposed to an ordinance unless it has a very, very short timeframe and it's linked to the end of the pandemic.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Next will be Tammy.
You're muted, Tammy.
I got it, I got it. I'm just going to read you the statement I sent to the paper who just asked this question. I wrote, "The county mandate remains, and I support the effort to keep our community safe. Balancing individual freedoms with the common good is always a challenge. I agree with the mayor's statement that it remains the civic responsibility of each person to continue protecting others and themselves. My priority is getting my kids back to school and people back to work as quickly and safely as possible." Back to our original question from a few questions ago, this isn't a partisan issue. We've got to keep the community healthy and safe. And unlike most of the other people on the call here today, I actually have three children who are sitting home, falling behind in school every single day because we can't get back to school. I'm an employer. I have employees who are struggling. This is really significant. We need to protect the public health, and we need to get back to work, whatever that takes. So again, I support the public health, keeping the community safe. And if wearing a mask is a small thing that we can do to get our economy back on track, then that's what we need to do. That's my statement. I just want to also throw out there that, unrelated, I would never support commercial construction in our Preserve. Unlike most of the people on this call today, I actually use the Preserve every single day and agree with that statement that you learn more about our desert when you actually use it. I served on the Development Review Board, not the City Council and not the Planning Commission. The Development Review Board oversees the quality of development in this city, and we make decisions based on architectural standards and guidelines, of which the Desert Edge was quite a beautiful building, and I agreed with the architecture of it. Whether I thought we should have commercial development in the Preserve or not, that's not true, and you're just trying to confuse people with that. So that's not me. I have a three-year record of making excellent decisions on the quality of development in our city. Go back and play any of the tapes. Thank you.
Can I make a brief response, Chris?
Yeah, you know what? I will come back to you, Tom. I'm going to give everybody a chance to answer the question at hand, and that is whether or not they support the mayor's rescinding of emergency declaration requiring masks in public places. And if you agree with that, and if you do, would you be willing to bring that back up in an agenda at the council? So the next person answering that question will be Guy Phillips. Guy?
Well, probably everybody already knows where I stand on this. I agree with the mayor on this. I tried to get it done earlier than this, but I'm glad you did it. And the reason why is because we're not under an emergency anymore. This emergency clause was never designed to run this long. It was designed for, you know, a dam breaking or an earthquake where a council or legislative body couldn't get together in time, and so the mayor and governor had to make a decision quickly. It never should have lasted more than 72 hours, a week at best. We need to get back to our constitutional republic. We need to get back to a council making decisions, not one person like a king or an overlord. And so, yes, I think we should, we need to make it a choice. You want to wear a mask? Go ahead and wear a mask. If the business requires masks, go ahead and require your mask. All he did was take away the mandate, so it's no longer a fine. You're no longer going to have something on your record the rest of your life because you didn't wear a mask. I mean, that, to me, is just ridiculous. It's destroying our economy. People are out of work, you know? Kids can't go back to school because they can't figure out how to make it work. To me, the whole thing is ridiculous. So I'll wear a mask in front of somebody out of respect for them, but I don't think I should have to be forced to. And so I'm glad the mandate has been lifted.
Okay, thank you, Guy. I believe next up for me would be John Little.
Okay, well, 200,000 to 300,000, on our way to 300,000 people dead from COVID is not ridiculous. There are three people that I, over the course of the last couple of weeks, have come to put this issue into context with. One, Solange Whitehead, who tried to get a compromised work-study session agendized, which she was successful at doing. So tip of the hat to Solange. Linda Millhaven for trying to agendize it, to have a really good discussion about it at a council meeting, which was not successful. Tip of the hat to Linda. But mostly my wife, who works at one of our local hospitals, who knows quite a bit about this. And one of the hospitals she works at has infectious disease experts who I believe need to be consulted. So A, Mayor Lane's directive, executive order, I thought was completely appropriate, and I was glad that he did it at the time. I wish that it had been extended, but I would certainly like to hear from our local health experts, of which we have plenty, Honor Health, the Mayo Clinic, really smart people, not politicians, but people in the healthcare industry that can help us understand what the right thing to do is. So I think a lot of people are trying to do the right thing. I wish that the mandate had been extended, and I would support putting it on a future agenda. I think that was a really smart thing to attempt to do last night.
Thank you, John. Betty?
I believe it was totally ill-advised for the mandate for the mask to be lifted yesterday. Masks have proven to be an effective way, along with social distancing and frequent washing of your hands, to control the spread of COVID. COVID is still out there. We have our children going back to school now. Why do we want to introduce another variable that may cause another spike in the number of COVID cases? So I feel that that mandate should have been kept in place until we either have an effective vaccine or we have herd immunity. I applaud Honor Health, and I applaud the chamber for disagreeing what the mayor did yesterday. And I think when John refers to the health experts, I think some of those are some of the health experts that, Honor Health is one of those health experts that we should be listening to in terms of the mask mandate. We have put tremendous stress on our healthcare workers. And how do I know this? Because five members of my family are involved in the healthcare industry. And guess what? They're all still wearing masks. And they're wearing masks because we know they work. So I feel it is the job of government to protect their citizens, to keep them safe, to keep them free from harm. And one of the things that is harmful now is COVID. It's invisible, but it's definitely one of the enemies. So I would strongly urge that we continue to wear those masks, and I do agree that we should agendize this item, discuss it. And I think there's a fair amount of confusion as to what the county mandate is as opposed to what Mayor Lane did yesterday, et cetera. So I do think we need clarity on it. And as John said, I think we need to bring in some of the medical experts and get more information.
Thank you, Betty. So, Tom, I don't want to take away, you wanted to rebut something here, but I want to make sure that you still want to do that.
Yeah, just very quick. Tammy said that at the Development Review Board, they were voting on the aesthetics and the architecture of the Desert Discovery Center. And if you look at the video, that's not true. The Development Review Board was specifically instructed that they're not voting on the aesthetics or the architecture. They were voting on the specific location of the Desert Discovery Center. And Guy was at that meeting. I imagine he remembers what happened because Guy made it very, very clear that they were voting on the location and not the aesthetics, and Tammy voted to put it in the Preserve.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, everyone, we're going to wrap this up. Thank you all so much for your time and your patience here. So here's how this is going to work. I'm going to, I'm going to start with, the order's going to start with Guy and then go John, or not Guy, I'm sorry, Guy, John, Betty, Tom, and then Tammy. So what I'm going to do is move on to the one-minute closing of statements. And so you have one minute to give the voters something more about you, something more you feel strongly about. And a same thing will come on the time. You can see you have one minute. It'll go down to 30, and then it'll tell you time. So again, let's go ahead and start with Guy Phillips. And you have one minute, Guy.
Thank you. So what I noticed in this forum is that you have the Betty and Tom are branded as no growth, and then you have the Tammy and the John Little that are branded as big development. I asked that you choose the middle-of-the-road guy, which is me. I weigh every issue with the residents and the businesses in mind, and I weigh every project to its good effects to the economy and to the city and to the bad effects to the economy and the residents involved. And I think that's what you need. You need the middle-of-the-road guy that's not going to be too far in on either way or measures everything equally. Guy Phillips, I hope I get your vote. My website is electguyphillips.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Okay, next up is John Little.
Thank you, Chris. You know, I started my campaign talking about preservation and progress. And, you know, last night at the City Council meeting, there was conversations about updating the city's transportation master plan. They're doing some road downsizing, 124th Street and Indian School. The question came up, Linda Millhaven said, say, how come there's so much traffic congestion on Indian School even when we're trying to update the master plan? How come that hasn't been widened? Well, I'll tell you why it hasn't been widened. Because on the corner of Messenger's property sit two pistachio trees. They're from the Middle East. They came to the Arizona-Biltmore in the 1930s. They were planted at Messenger's property. That's part of our history. When I was the transportation director, we decided not to widen Indian School Road there so we could preserve that part of our history. That's incredibly important. Although we preserve our history, we also need to forward our transportation plans and move on into the future. I'm for progress, and I'm for preservation. And that's, I think, where my heart is. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Betty. Janik, please.
I believe the citizens now have a clear view of each of the candidates. Do you want candidates that represent you, that have endorsements from all parts of the city, from City Council members Kathy Littlefield and Solange Whitehead, former mayor Mary Manross, and many other notable citizens, the Coalition of Greater Scottsdale, and the Arizona Green Chamber? Do you want candidates that have their finger on the pulse of the community, as Tom and I did with the referendum for Prop 420 and South Bridge 2? We need more than what John Little talks about with quality construction. Any new project must be incorporated into the landscape of the city. We need to recognize that citizens have had enough of the zoning changes to high-rise, high-density condo boom. I want thoughtful growth, not no growth, thoughtful growth. I promise to listen to the citizens. I believe that is what the citizens want in their city council. If this represents your vision, please vote for me, Betty Janik, and Tom Durham. For more information, go to www.botjanik.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next up, I have Tom.
Betty and I are not trying to divide the citizens. What we're actually trying to do is to figure out what the citizens want. Do they want height and density? If they do, they know who to vote for. But if they don't want height and density, they want more livable environments, then Betty and I are the right candidates. So we're not trying to divide anybody. We're just trying to do what Scottsdale citizens want. I think the views are pretty clear here, so vote and make your choice. Betty and I are the only candidates to be endorsed by both the city metaverse and the City Council and the Coalition of Greater Scottsdale, which is a watchdog for land use in Scottsdale. Now, it's not true that I'm anti-business. That's just not true. I was a business lawyer for 35 years, and I understand the importance of business to economic growth. Scottsdale's the number-one place in the United States for new jobs, and I intend to keep it that way. But businesses must abide by our rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And lastly, Tommy, or Tommy, I'm sorry, Tammy. Let's hear from you, one minute.
I give you an opportunity to say my name again. I'm Tammy Caputi, and I'm running for City Council because we need leaders with aptitude, experience, and vision to help rebuild our local economy. We shouldn't have our minds made up ahead of time, and our default position cannot be no to new opportunities. Council members are elected to exercise good judgment and collaborate for the best results. As a three-year member of our Development Review Board, I have a track record of doing this. I've built my own successful business, providing lighting for our hospitals and roadways, airports, and ballparks. I work in an industry that experiences regular downturns, and I know how to pivot to new opportunities. I want to maintain Scottsdale's winning formula of high amenities, strong property values, and low property taxes. We have to balance our open spaces with nurturing our economic drivers so we can afford these things that we love. As a mother of three in our schools, I'm committed to making Scottsdale even better for them than it is for me. Learn more about me at tammycaputi.com. Thank you for being here today. I'm Tammy Caputi, and I'd be honored for your vote.
Great timing there, Tammy. Thank you.
I've got it down.
So right now, this is the closing part of our forum. First of all, I want to thank all the candidates for being here. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your good thoughts. This is not an easy time to be in politics, as we all know, but we appreciate that you've dipped your toe in the pool and that you're giving it your best shot, and I appreciate that. So in closing, I'd like to also thank, again, the Scottsdale Area Chamber of Commerce, SCOT, Scottsdale Leadership, and Scottsdale Arts. They were the supporters of this and sponsors of this. And this is being recorded, so on YouTube, you will be able to pull that up through any of our sponsors on their websites. And if I'm saying that wrong, somebody's going to text me really fast and say, no, that's not right. But I want to thank everybody again for being here. Thank you to, I want to say thank you to Brittany, who was our timer. And for all Scottsdale, I know that more than anything, all of you care about Scottsdale, and you want it to be the best city that it could possibly be. So you all have that in common. So thank you very much. Best of luck to everybody. And thank you, everybody out there who's watching. Have a great day.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.